Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, proceeding, we have on our agenda approval of minutes public and non-public of October fourteenth. I want to make a motion for that.
I'll look for approval of the public and non-public minutes of October fourteenth.
Okay, I'll second. All right, go seconds. Any comments, questions, corrections, concerns on those?
I actually do have a change that needs to be made.
Sure.
It is when we are talking about, so it's line thirty-one, thirty-two, right in there.
Okay.
Sorry, page one on the public. So it does need to read that, it says every year they have returned funds to the schools and we have received one million back in premium holidays from school care in all. I think that we'd just like to clarify that that does reflect over the past five years.
Right, okay, yeah, just to be clear.
Not really in each time.
Yes, to be clear.
So I'll just explain that to Kamala, she's unable to attend tonight.
Okay, oh yes, all right, and she will rely on these. So with those corrections, for clarity, anyone else? All right, seeing no further, nothing else. All those in favor of approval of minutes, public and non-public, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. You will, as I mentioned to some of you beforehand, I came down with something over the weekend and then I got my flu shot yesterday, so I'm a little under the weather, seem a little out of it, that is why. All right, first public comment, any public here to comment? All right. All right, first we have a presentation, Arts and Letters Curriculum Proposal.
Yes, I have no word, I have no word to put on the TV.
I know, there's really, yeah, it's hard.
So, just wanted to talk about the curriculum review. So we have an eight-year mapped-out curriculum review cycle. Back in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, we started looking at English learning arts. But this is the curriculum cycle that I'm following with all the different committees. So just wanted to show you that, a little bit about our ELA process. So we began in the fall of twenty-twenty-three, we were looking at ELA specifically. We were beginning to look at our current curriculum and all of that in phase two. So the winter of twenty-twenty-four, we really did a data dive, we looked at our literacy data from Ames Web and WAA SAS and tried to figure out if there were any deficiencies between the programs and what we were seeing on the SAT scores and are we seeing that in the other programs as well? And we did some research on the science of reading. In the spring of twenty-twenty-four, we created an action plan, a lot of this, the first several phases was with Angel when she was here. So she spearheaded that, but we created an action plan, again reviewing different ELA curriculums and from various vendors. In the fall of twenty-twenty-four, we worked through as a committee narrowing down the different vendors and different programs that we wanted to pilot. And in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, we did a mini pilot of this program, Arts and Letters. So to give you an idea, these are all of the programs that we looked at. Wayton Wisdom, a lot of the local districts in the Southwest CIA Lake region are using Wayton Wisdom, Arts and Letters, is a new program based on feedback from Wayton Wisdom. So it's a very new program, we did Benchmark Advance. We struggled with a vendor for Benchmark Advance, like trying to do like a mini pilot. And then I recently found out that it's not approved by the state of New Hampshire as an ELA program. So it was good there, that we kind of struggled with that. Reading Wonders, it's not that different than the current version that we have. It does say it's aligned to the science of reading, but it's not really that clear how. Ufly, we looked at, it focused a lot on foundational skills. Fish Tank, my understanding was that Lebanon was piloting it last year and they actually emailed me and halfway through the year, they're like, what are you looking at? And so they pivoted and we're looking at Arts and Letters as well.
I said it didn't go well.
Yeah. So KCOL, I believe, was an old program that Lebanon had gotten rid of previously, so. And then the ELA education was one that just, nobody really was like, yay, let's look at this one.
Yeah.
Right, they were more like eh, and so they didn't really want to look at it any further. And then the Art Core wasn't supported by the science of reading, so.
You're very thorough.
We tried. So our current program that we have is Reading Wonders. It was purchased back in twenty-fourteen and it has been, it was prepaid until twenty-twenty-six. So it was like, all right, well, it's coming to an end, like we weren't really thrilled about it. So it's kind of what was missing. So it doesn't follow the science of reading, it's outdated, it's a large textbook and it has all the stories for the year in it and the kids don't really find them in the aging. And it was lacking in the evidence-based phonics. So because of those things, we had to supplement with foundations. So that is an evidence-based phonics program, it's supplemental. We added it in the fall of twenty-twenty in grades one and two. And then the special educators were really kind of the ones using it at that time to meet the phonics instructional needs of students. And then it was added at EBS, Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, when they implemented their wind block, when she first came. And so they used foundations to provide the phonics instruction across K-two. And then last school year, it was added universally between CES and EBS and using it in the wind block. A little more about foundations. So, and then it's research-based, it utilizes the science of reading. The goal of foundations is to prevent reading and spelling failure by explicitly and systematically teaching foundational literacy skills for all students. So it does phonological and phonemic awareness. They do decoding and encoding, it's embedded dictation, right? So a good indicator of a student's understanding of phonics skills when it's taught is when they're doing the dictation. They've got the high-frequency words, handwriting and spelling, and then reading fluency. So these are all part of foundations that we were using to support Reading Wonders because Reading Wonders wasn't doing what we needed it to do.
So Reading Wonders didn't support anything for phonological awareness?
It had some, but it wasn't enough.
Okay.
So our data, what does it tell? So I looked historically at our stats data and it's showing across grades three through eight that we are weak in the area of informational texts. So informational text includes history, science, social studies, and technical texts. So students are asked to be able to refer to details and examples in texts when explaining main ideas. They need to be able to compare and contrast structures of ideas and concepts, describe logical connections between sentences and paragraphs in a text, and be able to use more than one text to speak and write about a specific topic. So based on that information, we were looking at Arts and Letters. So it's an integrated program, it provides rich, authentic, great, appropriate, knowledge-rich texts. We did bring some samples for you guys to look at as well. It integrates literacy, social studies, and science, lens, nonfiction, right, that informational text, fine arts, and multimedia materials. It builds connections between disciplines. It creates a, and I'm sorry, it's annoying. Creates a dynamic learning environment, it's grounded in the science of reading, and it's made to work with existing phonics programs. Some of the other programs that we looked at, you had to also then purchase their phonics that goes with their program. So we didn't really want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and start a hundred percent fresh. The benefits for students, so it gauges them through diverse meaningful content, builds knowledge across multiple subjects, encourages creativity, curiosity, and confidence, and then it strengthens reading, writing, and critical thinking. So then the science of reading, I don't know, tag Jamie.
All right.
When we were at our budget meeting, one of the questions that came up about us adding, potentially adding a program or changing a program was, science of reading is sort of a buzzword right now. But what I want to impress upon everybody is that the science of reading is not a program. It is how science is connected with brains and how kids learn and we are not born to read. That's not how we are made, and so we have to create new neural pathways for kids to be able to learn how to read. And so the science of reading is this foundation of all of this, this research that comes together to tell us we have to be really specific and intentional in how we teach kids how to read. That includes making sure that they know how to encode and decode. We need them to understand that every letter has a sound and it changes based on where it is in a word or what it's connected to, right? So that's essentially what it's talking about. So there is a misconception sometimes that the science of reading is a program. It's not a program, it's the research behind why we need to be very specific in how we teach. And then the core reading framework, this is anybody who's been in education for more than a hot second has seen this. The reading route essentially is word recognition, decoding, and language comprehension. And those two big pieces, there's a whole bunch of pieces for each of those. The science of reading tells us that we need all of those parts in order to build successful reading. So just having an understanding of this is what the science of reading is about. It's not about a program, it's about how we teach, what we're teaching, how we talk to kids, and how we help them understand all the parts and pieces that they need to have to be successful readers. Does that make sense? And this is, this just talks a little bit, and I'm not, I don't want to read every word, but this talks about how science of reading is embedded in Arts and Letters or how they work. It aligns, so that we know, based on this, that we're not going to create any barriers to students' understanding of language.
Yeah, see how you get it from all different aspects, so sometimes it's with hearing and sometimes it's with using physical touch, sometimes, yes, acting it out, it's all part of.
All the things.
All the things work together.
Right, and what I've heard, nothing, the good things that I've been hearing about and looking into this later is that because it comes at it from some of these different ways, kids are surprising some of our teachers with what they're able to hold on to, which is great.
Or what excites them, you never know what excites a kid, it grabs them and gets them excited about reading, that would be ordinary.
So along with Arts and Letters, there's a GEOs, which is, they're decodable texts and they're for our early readers, so kindergarten through the grade. It combines the decoding practice that they need with science and history and culture things and it fills them with background knowledge. It's meant to complement, not replace, any strong foundational skills or phonics program. And so the books are designed to be paired with phonics and literacy programs like Arts and Letters and Foundations. So students are getting all of that support through these GEOs, they're very cool. And so we figured it would be smart to go, what are teachers and students saying? And these slides are, they're full, so we're only going to highlight bits and pieces of them. So in fourth grade, some of the kids have said, this is so fun, it was my favorite lesson ever. They're having discussions about the circulatory system and so they're using vocab words.
They said that about the circulatory system?
Yes, they did.
And I have to be honest, this quote came from, this came from a classroom in my building and the teacher, who's incredibly seasoned, said, I genuinely thought they got nothing from the lesson. Like I didn't think that they had been able to keep up with me, I wasn't sure. And then at the end of the lesson, this is the response. So I think that's been really powerful for, even though it's hard to transition to a new program and there's big words and there's things, kids are using this language.
I'm reading all that vocabulary, they use those words, like a kid pulled those words out?
The kids were using, in a fourth grade classroom, they were using those words to talk about what they were reading.
That's cool.
Because I can't. I agree, right, like that's what we want, we want them to be excited and be able to.
Good luck for me.
And then some more fourth grade stuff. So what are we doing for Arts and Letters today?
Yep.
Is it time for fluency, because fluency is built into the program as well? And, you know, Arts and Letters is a lot of work, so we're really challenging kids, which we enjoy. There is one book that they hooked that they are reading, it's Love That Dog. A student who hates to read was asking, can I read today, can I read another page? So that's exciting, they're engaged. And then when they were doing their, discussing, oh, I'm sorry.
Isn't that fourth grade now?
On a snowy evening, right, by Robert Frost. I had to put this in here even though it's a lot because it's just, it's exciting, right? We want kids to connect to their prior knowledge. So this student thought that the narrator, narrator might be Santa because he's near a village and the promise is that he has to, he could be the presence, right? And since he has miles to go before he sleeps, he might have to give out a lot of packages, right? A lot of presents before he goes back.
None of us saw that, right?
It's the most like heartwarming, honest answer from a kid ever. I love it. And in third grade, I like the books, they're fantastic, they make me feel like a third grader and that I'm learning. My favorite books are so far Amos and Boris and Solving the Puzzle Under the Sea. I like that you can learn like lessons from the books. Students are enjoying the stories, the artwork, and the discussion. Students get to think beyond just recall important things. The notice and wonder activities really catch them and engage them. And then again, recognizing that the texts are challenging, but we are working to make them accessible for all students. Second grade, they're really enjoying it, learned all about the life cycle pretty much of a leaf and autumn and how they change. So they're enjoying the fact that it's a great way to implement cross-curricular content. And then the other second grade that gave us information, the kids were using the terms foreground and background, which was kind of cool for them.
Yeah, chlorophyll came down, came into my house.
Well, I'm glad that you said that because the one thing I didn't add in here and I probably should have is that one of my second grade teacher who's doing it, we have an identified student who has a hard time making connections and when one of the projects or pieces is they had to write a narrative and they were the leaf and they had to talk about what was happening. And we had an identified student who struggles with language pretty incredibly that was able to use the word chlorophyll in her writing to say, I would ask the sun to go away so the chlorophyll could refill my leaf, so the color would come back. So it's incredibly, like I lose focus, it's incredibly powerful what the kids are getting out of it, even though the text is challenging and the GEOs we're hoping are going to help support access for the kids that are struggling.
It's like a scapulae underneath that, that's nice.
And again, just acknowledging that it does take a lot of time to sort of navigate, but, you know, we're working our way through it. So it always comes down to what is the cost of a new program? So the initial cost for EBS, CES, and IRS combined is forty-five thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's for all the teacher's editions, it's all for the student consumables, which are called their learn books and the student text sets. We did bring copies of like different texts so that you could see them. The recurring cost is just the consumables, so the learn books, and they're five dollars a book. So after that initial cost, it would be approximately three grand a year to replace the learn books and then that would be a super book. For GEOs, the initial cost is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. That's combined between both the EBS and CES and that's the K-two, three GEOs. And there's no recurring cost unless for some instance there's like a bubble and there's like a bubble grade.
Yeah, we can buy money.
All of a sudden there's like, we got sixty kids in one, you know, building, right? That we might have to purchase additional, you know, copies, but for the most part it's an upfront initial cost, but then no recurring.
There's no subscriptions or anything.
No subscriptions.
That's very nice.
The students do have access to Arts and Letters online, but it's just digital copies of what's in their learn book.
Nice, that's simple.
So there are no games or no what like.
That's it.
And then kind of like how can we improve? So again, going back to that data and what it shows about informational texts and Arts and Letters integrates informational texts throughout each grade level through science and social studies content. And we are recommending that we move forward with Arts and Letters and Shields for our new ELA program and that we are seeking the board's approval to move forward with them per policy, I believe it's IGA.
All right, thank you so much.
Questions?
Okay, yes, questions from the board?
Yes. So I'm going to put my teacher hat on here with this, is that whenever you have a new program like this, there's always an onboarding time for that? Is that something? And also too, like when you run a pilot, like usually it's your most motivated teachers that are looking to like really get out there and like try something new. So I guess it's a two-question thing. So being able to, what are you looking at for potential onboarding time to make it proficient with your teachers? Because this is going through K through eight?
K to six.
K to six? So K through six for onboarding time? And then what kind of supports will you have for teachers outside of that? If they're struggling with implementing this program?
Good questions. So one of the things that we put in the professional development specific needs study was focused around Arts and Letters training and we had an overwhelming response of people who really want that. And so the idea was that the teachers that are doing the soft rollout this year would be able to help us, help the others with, you know, the program and getting to see things. We'll do some professional developments in the fall when they return and hoping to try and schedule some before school starts and get teachers to come in early and get some training on it. Our rep that we've been working with is phenomenal and they do provide us professional development to help as well.
So would you say people are excited, I don't want to say excited to move away from Reading Wonders, but excited to put in the prospect of a new program that they are eager to learn? And so there's some excitement around a new program?
And I would say there was a member of the MCIELA committee that was like, I don't want to, I don't want to pilot.
Right, yeah.
Had been kind of burnt out from piloting before and then went, all right, I'm interested, I want to try it.
Yeah.
So they are actually part of the soft rollout this year, which is next month, so.
Other questions from the board? One question I had, so Reading Wonders lasted us twelve years, basically, right? You said like from twenty-fourteen and that got us to twenty-twenty. Do you see this lasting around the same amount of time? Because given, I mean, obviously we'll assess it after first couple of years and see if it's working for us. And then we did the same with Reading Wonders and stuff. This seems to be about the same price that Reading Wonders was if, you know, compared. I don't know if I have that in front of me, but this seems to ring a bell, I don't know, I mean it is.
I think this is actually a way less expensive program. I feel like I was there because I was a new principal at the board meeting, we were in the Kane Library. And I feel like we split Reading Wonders over the course of two years. And I think it was a total of a hundred twenty thousand.
That sounds more like it to me, yeah, that's, yeah, so that's why, this sounds like a good deal.
I genuinely was surprised when we got the quote that said that the consumables are only five dollars a piece because even for illustrative math, we pay a lot more than that for the consumables. So I was shocked that it was that inexpensive.
Is this like workbooks?
It's just, yeah, it's just a workbook.
Yeah, it actually has a copy of it.
Can we see some of these in terms?
So it's just a little different.
That's a nice workbook.
Yes. There would be one for each module, so there are four modules in this full year.
Yeah, there's four modules, so the assumption is that, you know, once we get good at implementing the program, it's a module.
Any other questions?
Do you have the total amount that you would need and we need the option on the funding?
I don't, we don't need the funding amount, do we need the funding amount? Or we just need?
I think you just need to approve the curriculum.
Right, and then you'll put.
Just, okay, without the amount.
Yeah, the amount would be forty each person.
Do you want me to go back to that slide?
Well, I have to, I have work to do. I can't be distracted from these awesome books about squid autopsies. No wonder the kids are, it's so cool, like.
One of the books in the, the beginning of the fourth grade curriculum talks about how history came about or implications, so it talks about that process and there's pictures about. Jackie Robinson.
I heard so many rumors about you, but that they don't exist.
This is good, this is good. All right, any other questions from the board?
I don't got any.
Well, thank you, thank you for sharing all this. Does anyone want to make a motion on this, on the curriculum?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the curriculum for the Arts and Letters presentation.
NGOs.
NGOs, yes.
I have a second.
All right, we have a second. Okay, any further discussion from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. All right, enjoy, have fun.
Thank you.
I look forward to this, this looks like a very exciting reading program. And yeah, we look forward to an update like after a year of it and, you know, yeah, just check in.
I'm super looking forward to, there was a question brought up at the elementary budget meeting about the data, so I'm super looking forward to. And we do our major data and being able to look at what that looks like. Because I, or see that work in the season, which is great.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and I know it sounds silly, but like I'm excited to look at like test data in like three years.
So I agree.
I have a question.
Yeah, so does this kind of move with the times? So are they, do they update it, do they put in new books, like how do they keep it current?
So because this program is like brand spanking new, I assume that they will, it's very current and up with the times. And I'm sure that the rep has been great. They had some supply issue, supply chain issues this fall when we were receiving materials and they sent us like, here's a YouTube version of that book because the books aren't in yet that you can use to keep the program going or we have to pivot you to this book. So they've been great and I'm sure that they will communicate if they are adding any new texts.
That's pretty cool. And you know, it is not like a multi-year contract that we're signed with them too. So if we feel that it's getting stale after like six years, seven years, we can look and shake it up again and, you know.
And that's why we have the curriculum review cycle.
Review cycle, that's right.
And then I think the last thing we have for you before, this guy was just giving you some information on Miss Kendra.
Yes, I saw that in there and I was like, oh yes, tell us about Miss Kendra.
Have you heard of Miss Kendra?
No, no, well, the name, I've heard the name, but go ahead.
So Miss Kendra is a social emotional learning curriculum that is trauma-informed and essentially the purpose of it is to empower kids to know that they have a right to be healthy, be safe, not be left alone, and not go hungry. Like that's essentially what their foundation is. We were very fortunate, there's a, we are connected with Dartmouth through the behavioral health, one of the behavioral health grants, and so the funding for this opportunity is through them, we're not paying for that. They train our school counselors on how to deliver the instruction for this program. There are guidelines and protective truths, so she essentially says you have these rights and I only put like three or four in there, but there, I think there's eight, maybe nine of the protective rights and they roll them out slowly and talk to kids about all of these things. No child should be left at home alone for an extended period of time without parental support. And they talk about what that means. And then they use, they use the red beads, so the red beads are the courage for speaking up. So if you had something happen and you shared it with the school counselor and said, I didn't feel safe at whatever event that happened recently, then you just get a red bead. It's a silent sort of trophy for them and it's not really something that we go into detail with. The really cool part is that we're naming, we are, we're naming the emotions and the worries and the things that come and giving them a safe space for them to share. So we are currently, we would like to do this in the second grade classroom or we're doing this in the secondary classrooms, the school counselors are delivering the instruction. It is during the thirty-minute school counselor time during their week. It's not taking the place of anything else, but it's just empowering kids to be able to speak up and be a little bit trauma-informed.
Cool.
It's thirty minutes a week and came from behavioral health, so I'm excited to see how that.
All right, so.
Any questions? I know, we don't need.
Is that just at your school or is that at both?
Both elementary schools, yeah, we're doing it right now, both elementary schools are largest class size is both in second grade and so we thought that would be the place to see new state information and get the training, so.
Good deal. Good, no, it's good to partner with community partners as well in things like this, so this is awesome.
I agree, and I think we often hear and think, don't talk about it, keep it a secret, right? Like that's what kids, but we want them to be empowered to say, it's not okay.
It's not right, yeah.
How did, how did the title come about?
That's a really great question. That's a really great question that I don't know the answer to, um, but I will find out and I will get that to you. When I worked at Claremont, we actually used this in kindergarten, we had a school coun, uh, school psychologist that, that did it in the kindergarten classrooms. And that's where I learned about it. And then when they brought it to us with this behavioral health grant came to them and they were partnering with us to figure out how we could be best supported, this was one of the ideas that comes like, yes, let's do it. So, I, but I will find out.
Cool.
All right, does this grant sunset at any point or are we?
Yes, it does. What I don't know yet is exactly when. At this point, we are paid up for this year and it's totally fine. We may be looking to either share funds or do some work about that for next year if it's something that we can do.
I think that it's really awesome that you guys are doing that, it's just really important to just discuss it with kids. Cause we could assume that they know that it's not okay to be hit or other things are listed, but they might not know that. And so, it's important to vocalize that and have a discussion.
I agree, and, and I just, it's, it's powerful, I think we want kids to be able to speak up for sure.
Another thing, I think having trauma-informed care in, in communities is doubly important too. Cause kids see stuff that we have no idea it's adults, so it's very important. Thank you for connecting that, bringing that there. Any further questions from the board on any of that stuff? All right, great, thank you so much for all of that. All right, uh, I've actually have public comment, any further public comment? Great, consideration, public comment. All right, student business, Abby, thank you. We have your report.
This is a long one.
Yeah, you don't, don't feel like you have to like read it like, like abate them, but yeah, go, go for it. Yeah, yeah.
The last, I think, month of the game scores.
Oh yeah, that's, that's nice.
Obviously, volleyball, lost in Sydney, but they won at St. Louis during, they lost at Newfoundland, lost at a game. Plus at Ball Mountain, they won at Curissarge, won at, won at Sunday, and now they're battling to have a game for round one in playoffs. Royal Soccer, a few losses, but Cleveland won at the, Hopkins and Trinity, they won at Belmont, they lost at Curissarge, I'm looking for it. And they fell just short making the playoffs in Sunday team play, which is pretty good. Boys lost at Stevens, Bishop Brady, Trinity, Hopkins, and Curissarge, Manchester West. But they are still traveling to St. Thomas for the three one playoff game.
Yeah.
Field hockey, have a lot of wins, they won at Newfoundland, Lebanon, they lost at Popkin at a tie. Won at Stevens, won at St. Thomas, won at Bishop Brady, won at Curissarge, lost at Burnham, won at Lenabonk, and they lost in overtime for St. Thomas. Football, they lost at Hillsboro during, won at Wintaswam, and they had a forfeit win over Franklin, cause Franklin did not have enough kids to play. Cross country, they finished their regular season, they had a great breast cancer awareness meet. And Ball Mountain Dairy Field, Newport, all joined them, and their off to state meets this Saturday. And Bass fishing, finish their season on the fourth, ladies and gentlemen, the championship tournament. And a couple upcoming meets for cross country, they have states and championships. And football, had a home game at Farmington for senior night and semi-finals. And other, I don't know, new ones, I guess. They have, we have the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, our 27th concert, and Susan Stevo building tour. And that represents on their own, the final report will be out in a fair six weeks. For the arts, um, jazz band, concert band, percussional ensemble, and concert choir, all working on their musical repertoire for the upcoming concert. Being in two of the five, I can, four, I can say that, band and percussion, so it's very well.
Band.
For art, there's quite a few things. On the ninth, the art department hosted a representative for mass art. And students learned about the summer programs for teens and portfolio development and undergraduate programs. Art students traveled to the Hall of Arts Foundation in Vermont for an holiday tour. With art exhibits and sculpture trail. Art in its design, Sam Hocken created Enfield Fire Department's logo for children's stickers and other promotional materials. Art students are also preparing for entries for the next issue of the Royal Review, which is almost an art literary magazine. Seeing this time and entries will be October twenty-fourth.
Can we pu, can we publicize that, the, the Enfield Fire Department, that like a student designed the logo for children's stuff?
I think you put that, is that on your?
A student, it wasn't a student.
No, it was a high school student, a high school student, yeah, the Enfield Fire, yeah, it's designed the High, Enfield Fire Department, yeah, I click on our Facebook.
Yep, it went out on Facebook.
Oh, good, I just wanna make sure we, yeah, that's something that's up there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very welcome.
That was cool. The art department also, they have student exhibits and artwork in the town library for Enfield in the teen room. And there's a rolling monthly exhibit, so new students get featured every month. And several old students are making clay bowls for Enfield Shaker Museum and do empty bowls event. And art club had additional art students and they're hooking carving today. They're carving over forty pieces for the pumpkin lighting event. For other clubs, student council booked their prom venue, I believe it's in Claremont, I think it's on May ninth. And they're planning to attend the Waterville Valley Conference on November thirteenth to fourteenth. Salt has made making awareness posters that are hung around the school, I believe it's a competition for Lady Stanley's. National Honor Society had nine new students, the induction ceremony was on the sixteenth. And they had a car at the Enfield Trunk Retreat this past weekend and a faculty breakfast and for the November eighteenth. Art clubs working on their literary magazines. And they have, writers' clubs also been discussing the literary magazine.
That's one of the same, right, like they work together on the, yeah, I see, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Robotics, their preseason meetings have started. For interact, they have, they're going to have a, I think it's a peanut themed trunk or treat car at CDS on Halloween. There was ushering for the a cappella night this past weekend and ushering for the fall play this weekend. Theaters working on their fall play, great expectations, opening night is this Friday. And they had a field trip for a workshop at Plymouth, which was on the seventeenth. And Oregon First Miles had ten new members join and our first meeting was on the twenty-third. Math team has had their first meet at Windsor, I believe, August, late eighth. DI, both teams are meeting and working on their challenges and a fundraiser murder mystery dinner is planned for November fifteenth. Quiz Bowl, Reddit State Challenge has been meeting every week. And we had a meet on Saturday, the eighteenth, and we placed second in the lower bracket.
All right.
For other school news, IR, this is the same as before, IRS has become their positive phone call Fridays. Each week, staff members are on the lookout for positive behavior from students. And when they see it happening, they fill out an online form, nominating the student for a phone call home, which is turned into a certificate. And on Friday, each student nominated gets pulled up to the office where the phone call is made. They commend the student for their positive contribution and a photo is taken of each of the students and posted on the call board upstairs at the office. For CES, grade student board with their newbies, they did finding our stride and participating in chat here. Classes, R T and adventure, the nice weather, do you like to be out there classroom and nature trails in class? And for EBS, EBS and CBS students went to the high school on October third to enjoy the PSU Tiger performance full contrast. About students that have worries and different ways to help support them. They had their open house on October seventh, and around five hundred and fifty people came between five thirty and six thirty. And on October tenth, UBS students and staff participated in fire safety day, where they entered posters and contests. And the women actually double the C P R I school fire show.
That is always a very popular.
Throughout the day, fire buyers, the presentations, all three levels.
Very. All right, there's a lot of stuff happening in our schools, thank you so much for that update, Abby. Uh, anyone have any questions for Abby on any of those items? Well, as you heard, there's a lot of stuff happening here at the high school this weekend and upcoming, in the coming weeks. Got playoffs coming up for a couple of teams, so, you know, now our students. All right, let's see, next up on our agenda, we have our educational issues committee, uh, reports. Kathleen, would you like to take that away?
Well, I'm friggin', actually.
Oh, you're, but you're gonna leave now, all right.
But I think.
Well, I mean, we can pretty much summarize it, we basically just learned everything you all just learned.
Yeah, I was gonna say, both of this is.
That was, that was primarily the meeting, so we already.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We had some stuff that was tabled and, and agenda for next time, but that was primarily the function.
Easy, easy, good deal, all right.
Thanks.
Hey, no problem.
Next on our agenda is a budget committee, their minute, the minutes from their meeting. Uh, we talked about the IRS budget and the high school budgets. You can read the minutes there. Um, the IRS budget is, I don't have it in front of me.
IRS is down.
Down, they're both down. Do you have the numbers of, Michelle? You know what they are? I'm sorry, I hate to pop, I hate to interrupt. But they are down, so you can look in the packet if you like to know. You can look in the packet, but they are in there.
They won just three point something, high school was less than a percent.
It was like, yeah, down point nine?
Seven, point seven.
Yeah. And like IRS was down like three, two, three.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't.
So.
I think it was like three point seven.
Something like that, yeah, so. You can look in your, you can look in the budget committee packets and see that there, so. What?
What's the administrator, we want to cut?
The administrative position?
Yeah.
Will be cutting the accountant position from the S A U office.
Okay, I don't know what that was.
Cause the next meeting is going to be next, next Monday night? And that is going to be the special ed and S A U?
And district.
And district, yeah, yeah.
Yep, the rest.
All right, good deal. Any question, other questions on budget committee? Through those minutes and stuff. As always, those are up to the public, up to the board, uh, please come and, um, yeah.
I think one thing that's also note that was generated by the budget committee was the addition of, um, piano tuning and maintenance for both IRS and N B R H S. But they wanted to add to it to make sure that music programs were sufficiently, um, staffed or sufficiently have the resources that they need, which I want to commend the committee for bringing up.
Right, that's right. Okay. All right, next we have joint loss management committee. Bruce, or anything on that? That is just on workers' injuries?
No, it's, it's all on, it's in, it's in the, it's in the report there and there's nothing, nothing to talk about really for say.
And you can read your minutes there.
Yeah.
All right. Super Ten's report, Amanda.
So, you do have my written report in your packet? Um, I start with some news about the convale lawsuit. So, we did file, um, a request for the state to reverse the legal fees. That was granted, so we'll be looking at about twenty thousand dollars being returned to the district that we paid out over the last, uh, feels like, oh, it's like, it was like eight years, it's been eight years.
Been a while.
It's been eight years.
Convale was eight years?
Yep, that's what the lawyer put in the report, so. We have had some pretty good response on the food boxes, the Thanksgiving food boxes. Uh, when I wrote this report, which was last week, it had just gone out, we had forty-six of the sixty boxes already accounted for. So, if families don't make it to the, you know, be part of the sixty, we will support them in any case. They should contact us.
Where did those, where did the components for those come from, like?
Uh, usually friends and maskoma has, does a huge portion of that. Yeah, and then we'll pack some stuff and the honor society and H S, if I was correct, will, will do a food drive potentially too, so.
Supplement and stuff.
Yeah.
But those will go, cause net benefits will be expiring at the end of the month. And, and, yeah, people lose grandkids, so, yeah.
Yep, a couple, little bit of information on the two plays that are coming up, so this weekend, great expectations. And then Seth and the IRS players will be doing sneaky cheese man and other fairly stupid jokes. So, that will come out December fifth and sixth.
I love it, wonderful, I love it.
So, we did complete our N E S K visit. I have attached a very, very nice letter from Dr. Nate Burns, Byrne, who is the superintendent in Northwood. Please take a minute if you have not read that. He commends the students, the staff, the administration, the custodial staff here. Very, very proud of, you know, what people here, you know, the visiting committee saw, how they were treated by our students. Just very, very heartwarming, um, to hear such nice things about our kids. And, you know, Tina, Tina was very, um, very, very pleased with this, shared this right out with staff. And I, I kinda thought about it and I was like, Tina, were you worried? Because I wasn't worried, like, I know we do great things and I know we're great. And so, I really wasn't worried, but I think she did have some anxiety, so this, this follow-up email is very, very good. And we'll be getting the official report soon, but very, very nice. Look at, even Mr. Rennett got mentioned here too, the first paragraph. So, you know, just very nice.
And Mr. Chalker got mentioned too.
Mr. Chalker got mentioned, yeah, it was, it was very nice. So, we're, I, I couldn't be, I, I know we do great things.
Yeah.
And so, to just have other people learn that we are doing great things, very, very good for our school and for our district. So, thank you to the high school staff, students, all, everyone that was involved with making that, um, visit successful.
He specifically calls off the custodial staff, he says it was not just clean, it was immaculate.
Correct.
Which is, I, yeah, we know that, we know that they do a great job. Yeah, that's awesome to see, so, yeah, yeah, definitely take the time to read that, so. And I ran into Tina right after they left, like maybe ten minutes after they left, and she looked like so pleased and, and just relieved. And, yeah, it's not really have anxiety, cause you're getting reviewed, you know, like that's happened, so. Yeah.
I was here when she was in the room with him.
Is this not as intrusive than?
Oh, no, it's intrusive.
Yeah.
I got it.
They're everywhere, right?
It, they did the same interviews, they did the same, you know, tough questions, um, the same surprise visits. We just looked very, very good. I did speak with the high school principal from Dover and he was, he was just like, wow, Amanda, I, he's like, it's amazing to come here and everybody kind of knows everybody, right? Dover is, uh, I think he told me they have fourteen or fifteen hundred kids in the building. He's like, you're, you're just seeing numbers. He goes, here, this, this is great. He's like, this is just wonderful, people know, kids know teachers, teachers know kids, kids know kids. It's like, it's very good, but it's still intrusive.
But it wasn't, it doesn't, I mean, I do keep in touch with some people just generally and, you know, there wasn't that sense of dread and.
Cause we're great and we know it.
Right, there you go.
No, but I do think there is that confidence, right?
Yeah, I mean, which is really nice, because until I saw the sign on the board, you know, welcome N E S K, it was like, oh, I forgot that was happening, because I didn't hear anybody's like.
Freaking out, yeah.
You know, which is really nice.
The, um, hiring, so we have been preparing for this forever, right? It feels like forever. And having two people that were solely in charge of, you know, this for multiple, multiple years, right? It was very intense with Tina and the staff right there, P D has been focused around this visit in the recent, you know, year. But prior to that, we've been planning and prepping for years, right? We've had people working on the N E S K, um, committee for years. So, I think that preparation really helped to take off the like franticness of being, oh my God, they're coming in six months. We've gotta do all these things, things that already been put in place. So, I think that helps, nice. Um, I do have a couple of other things, Tim.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Um, I have been asked if the, uh, if you all would like your books?
Yes, no? I like getting them as a one number personally, but we budgeted for it, we put it in our lineup for us to buy them for ourselves.
I have quite a collection of mine.
I still know some kids, so, yeah, and teachers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, I would say yes.
You get to ask her questions yet or what, wait till she's done?
See what else she has.
Not quite done yet.
Let her do it, let her do it.
I'm just waiting, Mrs. Clayton.
And the final thing is I would like to go back and revisit the Miss Kendra, I would like a motion to approve that program.
Oh, sure, okay.
I wasn't, it's, it's a little bit, because it's not a full program, it's a little vague in the policy.
Okay.
But I would like to go back, if you all would mind, and make a motion if some other come to do that.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the Miss Kendra program for S E L grade two.
A second.
All right, any further discussion on that? Uh, all those in favor of approving Miss Kendra grade S E L, the same people saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much. Now I'll take questions. Now I'll take questions.
All right, now you can ask a question, go ahead. The chair, the chair recognizes Brewster, go for it, go for it.
Two questions, what are you gonna do with the twenty thousand dollars, where's it going?
I'm going shopping.
See, it's on tape, all right, so then, now you're in trouble.
No, that's.
Get rid of that, seriously.
For, for them for it, it goes in line nineteen, nineteen ninety revenue.
So, is that, is that, that's not the same offer we use all the time, right?
We do not use that.
I didn't think so, that name was there. So, on your accreditation thing, just so you know, being the longest one on here, in previous. being the longest one on here, in previous years, way back, used to be major upheaval about having them show up in here. And I think it has a lot to do with what you have for administration here along with your students, along with your staff. So just so you, you know, you know, I, I know because I, I was on, I've been on the board long enough that it used to be a, we were in a situation where we might not get accredited years back. So it's very nice to know that this is going on and still moving forward. It's, it's a credit to your staff and everybody there. I joked, I joked that the two students, they, I read, it took me more than a few minutes to read his report from Northwood. I read it today. And it was, I was impressed.
Yeah.
Really was impressed. So those two students that talked to him, whoever it was, I said, I joked, I said, well, they must have paid them pretty good. But no, you need, you know, let, let the staff know that as far as board members go, I, I don't really think that. It's, it's really great to see that because I actually had to be here for some other problem from my computer. And Tina was in the office with them, so I stayed right, as soon as I, soon as I knew they had people here, I got the hell out of here. Well, in other years, you used to come in here and the other principals and the other, the other assistant principals, it used to be, it used to be really, very, very difficult, but that's good. Now, this is only, only, last question I have, it's only like every five years we want to, or is that, you never know?
Every ten.
Every ten?
So the visit's finished and then I think they'll give us some recommendations to check back in in two years.
Yeah, only come back in two years. We start planning again in five years. We start banking.
They can come back anytime they want, right? Can they come back like in three or four years?
Um, I don't know that they'll do the big visit because it's fairly expensive.
We're not on any kind of probation or anything like that because where, I think that was the risk in years past.
Is that what we ended up having? That's why you're so long?
Yeah, I think they were like, we gotta come back and look at you guys a little more often. Yeah, I don't think, I think now we've made it with this type of report, I think, I think we're good to go.
Okay.
And it is, I want to just say, it is a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work on our staff and.
Couple committees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have a going review like this for somebody from the, from the committee is incredibly hard work.
I just know in previous years, we, we had to go through a lot.
The sweat bullets, right?
Yeah, yeah, well.
Alright, any other questions for Amanda?
I do one more thing.
One more thing, alright.
The Miss Kendra figure.
Yes.
Jamie sent me this. It's not a single person, but an imaginary and universal symbol of a caring adult who listens to children. The character is designed to inspire teachers and other trusted adults to bear witness to the lived experiences of children and to provide a safe supportive space for them. So that's the history and origin of Miss Kendra.
Alrighty. Okey-dokey. Alright, next on our agenda, we have a business administrator report. Some show.
No surprises in this one.
No surprises, but my numbers are in there, so I are.
Yeah, there we are, yeah.
Three point two, the high school was point seven, there's some decreases. Talk about all the other budgets. Today, we finished up District Y, SAU and Sped for next week. Those are all coming in pretty flat. Summer down, Sped's up a little bit. The school care annual meeting is scheduled for Friday, November third, and the renewals are on the agenda, but we will not wear that day. They usually tell us the following week, like, when, when our rates are. So hopefully by that date, we'll, we'll know. And this past summer, there was a equipment grant from the USDA and we, Anne and I, Maggie and I submitted one for each school. Decide which piece of equipment each school needed in the cafeteria. And EBS was the, the lucky winner who got chosen. So they'll be getting their new conduction, convection oven.
Alright.
With that grant. And audit. I have him scheduled for November twentieth and twenty-first to complete his testing.
Oh, nice.
Is it the same audit as, or the?
Yes.
This is the last.
Last year we got that, right?
Like, like twenty-six will be his last.
Next year.
Year.
Okay.
Next year? Okay.
Right. This, yeah, the year we're in, he'll audit.
So we can plan to.
I gotta go up to bid.
Right, well, yeah. Alright, well, congratulations to Anfield for their new convection oven. Those are energy hogs, so hopefully we'll get a nice, better one. That's good.
Yeah, and I do have the CIP, I think, if I'm wrong, I did that. I made approval on that.
Alright, it's in the packet.
It was forgotten, but it included my report, so I had to increase the athletic field upgrades to include irrigation.
Well, yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, that's up next. That's coming up down here, so we'll, we'll talk about that too.
Yeah, so that's the bid. And then the CIP is just increase that line, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so next we have on our agenda, we have bus routes update. Any updates for bus?
I do not have any bus routes.
Okay. I did see an article in the Valley News Today about bill that Tom Opel said was putting in board, and I saw your quote in there, which is great because it is absurd.
It is absurd. I was gonna mention absurd.
It is absurd that you can't, that they're exactly the same requirements just about. And you can't, it's just the same hunk of metal that you're driving on one side of the river to the other. So, um, yeah, hopefully that gets some traction and we'll see how that goes, so. Alright, delegate assembly, update on that.
Alright.
Yeah, go for it, Dan.
So while the meeting began with a presentation by Paul Zini, who works for John Guildfoyle PR, which I understand is our PR firm. And it was really an excellent presentation about communication. You know, he, he involved us meeting with one another, asking each other questions, some, you know, some great slides. Talks about how norms are really important for school boards. And I did ask him, I said, do we have norms? And he's, he was like, I think I tried once, but. And, you know, talked about how, you know, it's really important to create good communication among board members. Talked about how, you know, people are watching us, you know, videos and so forth and how, you know, we may not realize it, but we make a face or.
Say we're going to go shopping with.
Yeah.
And so, you know, just be aware of those kinds of things.
You think John Guildfoyle's our PR firm?
But, you know, then there were the usual intros and approval of last year's minutes and so forth, and then we moved on to the resolutions. And, you know, there was, it generated a lot of conversation. There was a lot of language workshopped by several delegates and some of it was agreed upon, some of it wasn't. But pretty much things ended up as we kind of expected them to in the, most of the resolutions, whether to go with the, what was recommended by the, the New Hampshire Board. You know, with some, maybe some word smithing in there, but.
They'll publish all the changes, like everything that's come out, they'll send it out to everybody. Like, for example, one is they, you know, they suggested alternative language with a whole bunch of words about, you know, opposing open enrollment throughout the state because of this, does this and that to the budgets and stuff. And delegates were like, just, just cut to the chase and we oppose state mandated, mandated open enrollment. And so we made it that simple.
Just really trying to make things succinct.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did. So that's, that helped her and that helped. Yeah, so like, that's an example of, we went, you know, instead of that big wordy thing, the delegates were like, make it simple.
We went through all of them.
And then at the very end, it was proposed by, I think it was eleven in school board member to kind of create interest in whoever, whoever is interested in, in kind of talking about school care and.
Oh, yeah.
Getting together on, you know, via video chat to discuss what's going on all over and so forth. So I did write my name down and am willing to attend those. I just happened to, to attend a school board, a school board, a school care meeting today for retirees, so that was quite interesting.
Alright.
Yeah, so I think that's the meeting in a nutshell.
Like, yeah, it wasn't, like, it wasn't scary. It wasn't that bad.
No, it wasn't that at all. No, it was, it was interesting, yeah.
Alright, cool. Any questions on that? Alright, up to new business. Alright, first thing we have here is baseball batting cages project donation. Looking for approval on that. I guess we'll open this discussion here. First thing I'm curious about is this did not come to finance facilities first, and neither did the next thing on the agenda, the irrigation. So we were curious where these came from.
Where? Amanda?
So the, I'm surprised that we did not bring this to you earlier, the batting cages.
I mean, we heard that, that there was talk of it.
Yeah, the batting cages have been in the works for quite some time. I know Peter Bergeron has done a lot of work fundraising, charities.
And I remember like when Steve kind of put together like his preliminary plan of what he wanted to wear, he's like, this is kind of where we'll be batting kids. We're like, okay, that's cool. But like, then this here, we never saw finance facilities.
Right. Would you prefer this goes back to finance facilities? That's fine, we can do that.
Was that what you would say, Brewster, or Dan?
His, his.
What's the board thinking?
Well, to me, I, the first two things on the new business are back to back. They, they need to go, they need to go back.
So the irrigation, the only reason that's being brought tonight is because it would need to get started.
Well, we'll, we'll roll with this first one then. We'll discuss the second one in a minute. Because I, I don't, I don't, there's a lot of this batting cage thing that, I understand, it, do they have, we had discussion on this, right?
Yeah, we were talking about it. But I guess my question is, would you rather just take this entire discussion to finance facilities and hash out the nitty gritty of it?
I mean, is there, is there, they already have the money or?
Yeah, that's a donation. Like, we don't have to pay anything for it. It's just to talk about, can we accept that and can we put it in a spot that we're okay with? Because once it's there, it's there, right? We're not moving this batting cage. It's a permanent fixture.
It's a permanent batting cage, but could be taken down.
Right, that's true.
Here, here the thing is, it's got a, it's, I didn't, he shorted it to me tonight. I didn't see this, where they're putting the, where they're putting the softball batting cage. This is two batting cages, right? That softball batting cage can't go there.
It's not going there. No, that's, that's an old map. It's gonna go along, Matt Oliver did some work with them on this. That is not going to go along the road. It's gonna go along the tree line.
Yeah, so.
And, and the thing is, we need to discuss this because I like how the track's been done and I, I need to, I need to get a visual of where this is.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I guess telling Tim before the meeting is, you know, I've seen another school that, you know, you guys, you may not want to have a track, but you might be able to put a track in based on what you guys just did with, with, with the, with the track you got down around the football field. So I mean, I think the, we ought to take this back to the, I can accept a donation, can't we? Is there a donation on this or not?
There is a donation on it. We can accept a donation, but we don't have to build, start building anything.
Like, the location can go back to finance and facilities?
Yeah, we can accept the donation and send it to finance facilities, right?
Right, that's what I like.
Alright, why don't you make that motion?
I'll make a motion. We can accept a donation, but send this back to finance facility for more clarification.
I'll second that. Okay, so the motion I'll forward is to accept the donation. Because we, we gave the permission to go get funding for the Burn Foundation and stuff.
Yeah.
Like that. Right, because you need permission. You need to accept the funding. Alright, any further discussion? So the motion is to accept the donation and send the batting cages to finance facilities, correct? Alright, all those in favor? The same by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No questions? Alright, and the next thing up here is, so we have field hockey and football field in-ground irrigation systems bid. I understand, I understand that the timeline is such to do it now before the ground freezes, but again, this did not come to finance facilities. So this is the first I've ever seen of this. This is the first you've ever seen of this.
And when you say irrigation, it's, it's, it's.
It's in-ground.
It's sprinkler systems.
It's in-ground sprinkler systems.
It's the first I've ever heard of this and it's, and the thing is, there's more questions to ask about this than there is clarification. Because you're putting irrigation for the field hockey field, which does apply to the baseball field on the outfield, okay? Never mind the football.
It's part of the outfield.
Not the outfield, yeah, it's on the right field side. And so the football field, I'm not, not worried about. The other thing is, the question is, where are you going to get the water if you're doing the irrigation system?
Yeah.
Where's the water coming from? Putting a well in? We're putting a T-shirt in? Where's, where's the water coming?
So the water's coming out of the river because we're allowed to pull ten thousand gallons a day.
Oh, that's good.
At no, you know, penalty to us.
Really?
That's.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Before we had the route, but yeah.
So we, so it does right now. Why you're seeing this is because it was part of a proposal that Todd had given us on the soccer field. And then again, when he was looking at redoing the football field and the field hockey field, we took it out when we brought the, when we brought all the proposals together to save money. The problem now becomes, we either buy sprinklers, like the large sprinklers we did there, at, how much were those sprinklers? Six thousand dollars each?
It's expensive. Matt quoted doing the football field hockey would be five thousand more than what Todd is doing for the in-ground irrigation.
So our choice is to move forward and while he is working on the field hockey field and the football field to also add this in, which is why you're seeing it now because it's more cost effective for us to put the in-ground in and less labor intensive, right? It's a lot of labor for them to go out there and hook up those. So that's why you're seeing it here. I'm sorry that it was such a surprise, but it sort of was included in one of our proposals. If you want to take this back to financing facilities, I'm going to recommend that we just remove it and, because we have to move forward with the fields. I'll be honest.
I'm not, I'm just interrupt you. I'm, I'm sorry, man, I'm not against this. It, it's just.
It's a surprise.
It's just a surprise, the timing, and I'm not against it because you know, always for the sports programs and I get chastised if I don't support everybody on, on certain ones, each, each gender, each one, which I, I do make sure, I make sure the Title IX, I cover that. It doesn't need to go back to us, but if it means, because I'm seeing the line item for ninety-five grand on both sides here, is that total, ninety-five grand total or a hundred and ninety thousand?
I see forty-four thousand.
I, no, I'm looking at.
You're looking at the CIP.
I'm looking at the CIP.
You're looking at the CIP for the field hockey.
Field hockey upgrade and the, and the football field upgrade, that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Is that where that's coming from?
So.
It's included in that, right? It's the sod and that irrigation. It wasn't.
Yeah, no, I'm just, yeah, I'm asking with that question. If it means that, are you going to be able to do that this, this next month coming up?
Correct. He wants to start tomorrow.
He wants to start tomorrow.
So can I ask, can I ask a question? So to back, to back this up, when, when, so I know that the field hockey, I'm just trying to get my ducks in a row here. So the field hockey field and football field were bid together just because we were able to get a deal with that, right? And so in the original bids for each of the field hockey and the football field, there was an irrigation component of that and that was taken out in order to get the bid together?
I can, I can tell you force a hundred percent certain it wasn't the soccer field that we took it out.
Right. Okay, alright.
So, and I'm pretty sure it was in with the football and the field hockey, but we asked them to take it out for, you know, cost effectiveness.
Right.
Then when Matt brings it out.
Now that we're looking at how much portable sprinklers are.
Correct.
We're like, whoa.
Yeah, portable sprinklers don't.
And they're not working near these wells as we thought they might perhaps.
They don't.
Okay, so this was. Because I see them sitting down there. So this was pulled, those were pulled from the original quotes in order to get the deal for the fields. Is that right?
Just to be less, less expensive, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, to lessen the cost.
Okay, and so this is that aspect, that, that component just added in as a separate thing in order to have the irrigation for, for this, for both.
And he's saying to do it now while he's putting in the sod.
While the sod makes sense.
This would be the cost.
Right, that does make sense. Okay.
They're ripping up this football field too?
Eventually, yes.
So do they think that this is going to last with the sod or the fields? Or how long does he think it's going to last for?
I don't have a, you know, he didn't.
I think a system like this, how long you see the life of the field.
Yeah, you look at, you look at London's field, they, they got an irrigation system over, over London's football field. My brother worked on it before they turf did it. My brother did it years back before you got there and then.
Like an in-ground one, you mean?
Yeah, it's all in-ground, yeah. And then they had to redo it all over because of the track, but the sod, I wouldn't worry about the football. He put in a new sod. I'm not worried about the sod. I'm more worried, once they put sod in, you need to have irrigation.
Right.
So, anyway.
Okay, well that provides some background, some explanation.
We don't need to go back to finance facility. That, that doesn't make sense.
If that satisfies, do people feel satisfied with that explanation? That does, that rings more bells now that you've explained it that way. I was thinking that this was like much older.
It's not going to affect the irrigation system with the way they're setting it up with the way the track is right now, correct?
Correct.
And that was the question before, was we did not know where we were going to get the water from.
Yeah.
Before, we didn't know where we were going to get the water from. But now that we know, we get water from the river.
Well, I knew they, I knew they got water from the river.
It won't be pulled until next spring, right? They're not gonna like use the fields.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I did have that conversation with Todd. I was concerned about putting in the sod this time, in this drought. And he said, don't worry about it, Amanda. It's gonna snow, it's gonna be cold, you don't need to water it till the spring.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we.
You wanted to approve the CIP first and then?
Well, you gotta have, you gotta have one, you gotta have both.
Yeah, approve the CIP first and then.
I'll, I'll approve the CIP as proposed to us for the field upgrades, um,
Okay.
For, uh, field hockey and football field.
Alright, so the motion is to approve the updated CIP plan?
Right, which is on.
Alright, do you have a second?
Five thousand for each one of them.
A second.
Alright, Dan, say. Say further discussion on the update for the CIP.
So that includes, Michelle, that includes the, this current proposal they have here. That's a change?
That, that's the change. That's, that's the only change to it. Okay, and that still keeps us on pretty good track for the rest of the times, so that's pretty good. Alright, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Alright.
Can I ask one question on the CIP?
Yeah, go ahead.
So for, seeing around athletic field upgrades, IRS for sixty-five thousand for year two thousand twenty-seven.
Yep.
There's gotta be some kind of plan in place to figure out where you wanna fix whatever field, because you're gonna, somebody's gonna ask us again about fixing, giving them a field to practice on. And, uh, so I think we need.
Have that conversation with finance facilities?
We, yeah, that needs, I need, I wanna get that brought up.
Okay.
Cause they're gonna, we don't, we want that.
Okay, we can start, we can start having a conversation.
Alright, and then, alright, so then, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we, uh, we already.
Approve the bid.
Yeah, we're going. Valley turf services for forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. And ninety-three cents to be done for sod work on both, uh, field hockey field and the football, high school fields.
Alright.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Alright, great, thank you for getting us through that. Alright, thanks for all the explanation, that does help.
Sure.
Alright. Alright, up next, we got some, uh, policies for second reading, so I will make a motion that we approve for second reading and adoption. Policy IMBD, high school credit for seventh elementary coursework. Policy IIB, class sizes and student educator ratios. Policy IIB dash R, class size regulations. Policy JLCF, wellness. Policy JLCK, physical and emotional wellbeing of students. Policy IMAH, daily physical activity. Policy EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan. Policy EBCH dash E one, chemical safety and hygiene, chemical hygiene plan, plan template. Policy IHCA, summer activities. Policy, policy EHAG, use of generative artificial intelligence. Policy IMBA, remote learning. Policy IMDA, patriotic exercises. Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion on any of those?
Yes, I do have.
Yes, which one would you like to start with?
Um, I'm gonna start with the, um, EHAG, so use of generative artificial intelligence.
Okay.
Um, so the big one that I wanted to bring up, and first of all, I guess the question would be for Amanda, whether or not the policy states that it is reviewed and then any questions brought to the board on August, October first, is that enough time? That is, seems to be a pretty busy time of the year. This doesn't necessarily need to be a power, like, uh, one that needs to be due right after the school year is done. I'm wondering if we might wanna bump that back a little bit to a less busier time of the year, where we can actually like take a look at, I feel like, uh, looking at from the beginning of the year to like sixty days would be a little bit more prudent timeline, but.
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay. Um, so that was the first thing, cause that seems like, you know, planning is tough to do at the beginning of the year.
What would, what would Craig think? Like, what does Craig need? Cause I would think like in planning for the following year, he might wanna have like his recommendations submitted by like May first or something like that.
Uh, Craig has a, Craig has a ton of recommendations all the time. He's a pretty flexible guy.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so, uh, you know, I think we'll push this date back a little bit and then live with it and then we'll look at it.
We can also.
Well, then we can review it every year?
Yes.
Yeah, this, yeah, so like we can bring this back up in the ICE and, yeah.
Yeah, and where it's so new, it's tough, right?
Yeah, this should be one we will be reviewing.
It's, it's, it's tough to know until you've lived it and then you go, geez, that really doesn't work.
So the, that was, that was gonna be my first question.
Okay.
And the second one I had, had to do with the aspect of, um, I'm in letter B regarding the implementation, no, I'm sorry, letter D regarding the, uh, guidelines for teachers on using AI. Um, it says, number four says, avoid using AI to replace core instructional responsibilities unless explicitly approved. Um, I would propose that we change that to do not use AI to replace core instructional responsibilities, because the instructional responsibility lies with the educator. It doesn't necessarily lie with AI. And I think that that is, uh, we don't need to avoid this, because I think that, um, that opens a door to, um, I just don't think that, I think that the reliance on, um, instructional responsibilities needs to lie with the teacher, not necessarily with the generation.
Sure, I agree with that.
Yeah. I was, was, any other thoughts on that?
I'm good. Um, D for changing avoid to do not use.
The only thing that I can say about that is, I'm taking college classes and a lot of my instructors have actually like reviewed what, what it looks like, just that people are knowledgeable. And so in order for teachers to be, um, you know, just kind of acknowledging that it's out there in the world, they would have to like use it and show students. Not necessarily use it for their instruction.
Right, I'm thinking it's meant to avoid using like course, writing course curriculum.
Right, exactly, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I work with people who literally use it to write their emails. You guys are, like, we're like trajectory to Wally in our swimming chairs and no brains right now, so like.
Lydia's taking classes where she's having to compare, do research and then compare the AI research of it, and like she's really learned a lot.
Well, and the scary thing is, is that, I mean, AI is, I mean, it's always improving, but at the same time, it's not always right. And so you can't truly take it as gospel that, first of all, it's the right instruction method, or even that the content is right. So it's, it's really scary to be honest with you.
It only knows what you tell it.
Well, exactly, and honestly, I mean, I've, I've asked it to find me things before and it's like, nope, you actually don't know what you're talking about. Like, that's not even real.
Yeah.
Right, and that's the reason why I said to change the avoid to do not use, is because unless explicitly approved.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not saying that you can't use, I, I, I think that is something that, at, in order to have like, you know, competent, career-ready students, we need to understand that this technology is here.
Right.
It's here to stay. And we need to be able to use it. However, I think that, you know, it, being able to, um, have that approval process of it, and again, the revision of it too, like Amanda said, like, it's a new thing, right? We're kind of all diving into this all in one, one go and see what happens. Um, and so I think avoiding is that, yeah, we don't need to avoid, let's just not use particular things unless they are approved.
Right, I mean, it's great for like aggregate data, which is be probably fantastic for students and things like that, but like, you know, it's just, I really believe that, like.
Well, not only that, I mean, if we, if kids know that teachers are using it.
Right, like, as I say, not as like you were writing.
Yeah, they're gonna think, well, yeah, I mean, my teacher used this, and they're gonna find it.
Well, they're gonna be the experts that are reading that, to be honest with you, cause they're gonna start like rewriting it, so it's a whole thing.
But, I mean, like part of this I really don't agree with, like examples of acceptable uses of generative AI for students, brainstorming ideas for essays or projects, practicing writing or coding with AI feedback, exploring creative expression through AI-generated arts or stories. Like, I don't think students should be using AI to generate art. Like, personally, I don't think they should.
I learn with you as a creative person, I hate it.
I didn't like that, you know, so I don't think.
I quit officiating instead of doing that.
The robot, that's right.
Really?
But like, you know, so I, I really question what, you know, how, it makes me, makes me nervous, but. We'll see, I mean, we can see how it goes and, and tweak it, but it makes me nervous to like check your brain out and just like let the computer do stuff, so.
I had another, another one, the last one I had had to do with under E, and where it states that it's under administrator use, uh, administrator use of generative AI, where number four states to inform parents and guardians about the use of generative AI in the classrooms. I would suggest that that would move up to the teacher responsibility and be part of the teacher responsibility within a syllabus of some sort. So that, because some teachers do not use it, and that's fine, but if they are going to use it, they need to label it. I, I believe, does Tina, um, have a copy of all of the syllabus, syllabi for each one of the classes?
I believe she does, yeah.
Right, because parents will come to her about whatever, and it's gotta be written in the syllabus, right?
That's a good, yeah, that's a good point.
So it, it, it doesn't necessarily need to be laid upon the administrator in order to make it aware. It should be more the teacher that is, um, letting their, letting the kids know and letting the parents know that the, um, generative AI is being used in the classroom. That should be listed in their syllabus. So that would be my suggestion to move that from the responsibility of the administrator into the responsibility of the teacher, because not everybody uses it.
Right.
And it's, and it doesn't need to be a blanket, like, uh, say, saying that AI is being used within the building, because some classes won't need it. But if you are going to use it, you need to explicitly do it. It should be at the teacher level, not the administrative level.
Right. Uh, yeah, I think you can add that. That number four, you can add it as a number seven to D guidelines for teachers.
I can push right up.
Or, it, cause it, it can be both, right? Would you say, Joe?
I think, I think Joe's saying take it away from the administrator.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Take it away from the administrator responsibility and put it on the teacher.
Sure.
Because like, it doesn't necessarily need to be like a blanket clause across an entire building.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Cause only some, only some classes are really gonna use, like, an AI aspect of it, and that should be explicitly listed in their syllabus that it will be used there. So, cause like, there are some classes that don't need the use of AI at all.
Yeah, I think, I think still at the building level, you still want the administrator to be able to tell parents that in some classrooms, we do use it here in some class, like if a parent was like, do you use it in the building? And then, you know, you should inform parents that we do use it in the building here sometimes.
So, yeah, or then maybe just adding a number seven to a teacher responsibility in the syllabus.
Yeah, I didn't wanna take it out of the administrators, but, yeah. But I like, I like having a, putting the onus mostly on the teachers, for sure.
Yeah, cause if they're the ones that are using it in their classroom, then they need to be the ones to make, um, parents' decisions.
Absolutely. I understand, I agree with that. Alright, anything else on this one?
I'm gonna change that October first date to December first, and then we can do it in November meeting. If that doesn't work, we'll push it over.
Whatever works for you guys, and, yeah, we can.
Saying there's no, that's a problem, there's a reason why you need to worry about AI then.
Well, ask AI what date would be best. That's right. Alright, any, uh, okay, any other of those second reading polit, is there anything else on the AI policy?
I haven't seen anything.
Alright, any other of the second reading policies? Anyone see anything? Alright. Having said, all those in favor of second reading adoption, uh, on policy IMBD, IIB, IIB dash R, JLCF, JLCK, IMAH, EBCH, EBCH dash E one, IHCA, EHAG, IMBA, and IMDA, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Alright. Next, we have some first reading. Um, I'll do these in a block as well. I'll make a motion for first reading. Policy BEDG, meeting minutes. Policy BBAA, school board member authority. Policy BBBC, school board member or district officer resignation. And policy BGAA, policy development, adoption, and review, first reading review. Do you have a second, Dan?
Second.
Alright, Dawn seconds. Alright. Anything on, uh, let's see, first reading, meeting minutes? Anything fun on that one?
Um, so the major change here is, um, section B, the numbers eight and nine were added. Um, and that's just puts us in line with, uh, new legislation.
That's right. Well, luckily, our reading clerk, our meeting ta, minutes taker has always put that stuff in there.
She sure has.
Cause she is awesome at that, so we don't have to worry about that one. Um, school board member authorities probably also has some legal updates. Did you have anything specific on that?
No, they're just, um, they, they say in the updates from the school board association, they removed some redundancies.
Yeah.
Um, and in places mild conflicts and other sample policies, they changed some language to better reflect the New Hampshire parlance relating to meetings.
Just remember that none of us speak on authority of the board as a whole, not even myself, not, you know, we just go, yeah.
Speaking on the authority of it though, is that like sharing information, like, I'll give you a really great example, the Liberty Farms thing.
Yeah.
Ah, everybody, the hot button thing is, can the school take it?
Yeah.
Oh, we can. And so I just jumped in and say, hey, I'm on the school board, really encourage you to come to a meeting where we've discussed this. Um, but like, this is not the forum for it, but we feel comfortable saying, yes, we could take more students, that's a problem. Um, that's kind of the only lane that I would ever get into with it, is just saying like, please go do a meeting and ask these questions.
Yeah, you don't ever wanna say, the board says, you know, like, now, but you can, you know, you you can say, yeah, we've said that, we've said that publicly at a meeting, like, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, if they wanna go back and check the minutes, I mean, they like can look at our enrollment, which is things that I will also point to, and that this is all public, and
Yeah.
please feel free to come and join us though if you have more specific questions.
Yeah, exactly. If you have any questions, you can always give me a call, Amanda, always. Alright, uh, next one, board member, district officer resignation. This is again, cleans up some language. I don't know. We did have this, but it's been quite a, is this one of our really, no, it's not, we, we changed this in twenty-two, but.
Yeah, this, uh, the update here just really talks, uh, about when a resignation is tendered, is it effective immediately? Or if there's no effective date stated. So that was really the biggest change here.
So, yeah, it was crazy.
You're sending that off to Claire Martin to check with their, their board? Anybody left over there?
Yeah, I hear there's more and more.
Oh, goodness.
Um, alright, and then BGAA, policy development. Um, I just noticed one typo on page two in E, it's work group, not work group. That's minor though, um, but this is just talking about our policy. We have a small work group policy that doesn't fit nicely into other categories for policies like this one, so. Alright, anything else on any of those? Alright. Anyone? Alright. All those in favor of first reading, uh, on BEDG, BBAA, BBBC, and BGAA, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Alright.
And that should clean us up until we get the full policy update, so you get second readings. There's no first reads next week.
Whoa, you, watch that, oh boy, oh boy.
You saved them from mine when I was running the meet, that's what you saved them for.
Boy, I saw this policy down there, Brewster, I was like.
You tell that on the.
You know something, I designate somebody.
Good, I did it.
I designated Joe, so I made Joe to redo it. We fly right through it.
Alright.
So.
Good deal.
I mean.
Um, next, so up next, our, see, our next meeting is going to be, pull up my calendar here. What does that, the, uh, we're scheduled for the eighteenth, because the next, the second Tuesday is going to be Veterans Day. And so we're, and then the fourth one is going to be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So we're gonna have one meeting in November. So we're gonna pack all of our fun into that one meeting in November, right?
All the fun, yeah.
All the fun into one being in November, so November eighteenth will be our next meeting. Committee reports, quarter of the reports, everything else. Um, public comment, thank you. Uh, next, we have personnel resignations and nominations. You have your green sheets in front of you. Alerted a motion on these.
I made a motion, we accept the nominations that they're, uh, for, on the green sheets on both of our renewals.
Okay. A second. Alright, any discussion?
Yes, I got, well, you're, you're missing, you're missing one, one athletic, uh.
We'll, we'll get to that then, I guess.
Well, we'll get, we'll, we're missing one, right?
Well.
Okay?
I think it's okay.
You okay?
I, I'm all, well, you're missing a JV boys basketball coach.
Good point, we are. That's Connor Torrey, we approved him in August.
What's that?
It was Connor Torrey, he was a new hire.
Okay.
So we approved him in August.
Okay.
Good, alright, you're already, look at that, see, she's so far on top, she's so on top of it.
Well, it's good.
Yep.
That must be bad. Alright, so everyone's good on that? All those in favors, all those in favor of approving the nominations, estimate, just signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions.
I know, questions for you.
I know. Alright, do we have non-public for purposes of me, hiring, alright, Dawn, you made a motion, okay, two seconds? Who?
I don't know who's second.
Who would like to second?
All second.
Was that Laura? Alright, so Laura second. Alright, uh, all those in favor of going to non-public, say aye. Joe. Brewster. Tim, yes. Diane.
Yes.
Dawn. Laura. Alright, we are at non-public.